Welcome everyone to the March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three Planet Commission meeting. Commissioner Getzner.
Hmm.
Please honor us.
I would love.
There it is up there.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Spencer.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Getzner.
Here.
Mr. Daniels.
Here.
Commissioner Mendoza.
Here.
Commissioner Work.
Here.
Commissioner Deal and Roberts are absent.
I'm here too.
Ah. Madam Chair. Oh, thank you for that.
Oh, yeah.
All right, let's start with directions for participating in meetings. Do we need to explain how to participate here and in the Zoom call?
I can do that. So I'll start with Zoom. If you're on Zoom, only staff and many members of the room should have their videos on. It helps to reduce distractions and helps with bandwidth. You can turn your video on when you're speaking. And if you'd like to speak on an item, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab on your Zoom platform. You would press the reactions tab and the raise hand icon to raise your hand to direct the speaker. We also ask that you keep yourself on mute unless you're speaking. To mute and unmute yourself, use the icon that looks like a phone on your Zoom platform. If you're on a landline, you could press star six to raise and lower your hand again using the reaction tab or on a phone, press star nine. You can also participate by sending an email to our dedicated Planning Commission hearing comments inbox. That's at P C hearing comments at C O dot Monterey dot C A dot U S. We're monitoring that in real time. And we will attempt to respond to those as we receive them. If you're here in the room, the same general principles apply. If you'd like to speak to an item, come up to the podium and speak. Once the public comment period begins, typically the chair will ask for the applicant or applicant representative to speak. And then anyone interested in the project will be given the opportunity to speak after that. And I believe that covers the instructions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. All right, now we will open it up to public comments. This is the time for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. There is a hand up. Messtad and Cowan has their hand up.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good, good. I'd like to make this statement regarding a case, P L N two two zero one seven four, Roman Catholic Bishop of Monterey. The purpose of my statement is twofold. Through Phil Angelo of the offices of the Monterey County Government, I placed a document and an addendum in that case file that contains new information found after the commission approved the applicant's plan for the demolition of a small building, a casita or adobe. Two, I would like to invite the members of the planning commission to see this casita at the annual public event at the Mission San Antonio de Padua on Saturday, April the fifteenth. Regarding item one of my statement, I'm not suggesting or asking that the case be reopened or reexamined. I'm making the commission aware that the adobe of the casita was in fact the residence of Sir Harry Downey and his family, the man responsible for restoring many of the missions of California. Regarding item two, I am cordially inviting you, the commission members and staff, to come enjoy the festival at the mission and to observe with your own eyes the architectural features that the casita shares with the mission before the latter is gone. I asked that this be added to the record. I spoke with a man who is the godson of Harry Downey. I met with him in person on Saturday last. He wrote a book called Harry Downey, A Man and His Mission. John Billman is the man who I spoke to along with his wife Dolores. And on page seventy six, he indeed says that this casita, which will be demolished, was in fact the residence of Harry Downey, Sir Harry Downey, who was knighted by the Pope at the time for his work on many of the missions in the county. And that is the end of my statement for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. And what was your name?
My name is Dr. Greg Messtad, S M E S T A D. And I submitted this also through the email. And also then Phil Angelo has my full version of this with all of the details.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, we'll close public comments. Any agenda additions, deletions, or corrections? For the record, we have no agenda additions, deletions, or corrections for today's agenda. For the record, that Commissioner Deal has arrived. Before we start with Commissioner comments, please.
Next time, you might consider our houses.
All right, fellow commissioners, any commissioner comments or requests? All right. Commissioner Mendoza?
Not so much a request, I just want us all to be aware which we are of what's going on with our community. And I want to thank everybody involved, everybody from the community for all their support and what a great job they're doing out there. They put up showers, they put up restrooms, they've done so much, they're doing a great job of separating all the different degrees to get rid of them, but they're doing a really, really great job. You know, cleaning up after the fact, pretty much our house destroyed, you know, a lot of the houses out there. Or they people lost everything. And it's not the first time it's happened. It happened twenty eight years ago, almost to the week. Twenty eight years ago, I got married and went away for my honeymoon, went to Puerto Vallarta. Next thing you know, I see Pajaro River levee broke. And here we are in Puerto Vallarta, and you know, getting back and there's blue barrels all over the place. And it happened again. I mean, this is happens once, you know what? Chances are, let's get working on it and and make it better, you know, what happened to the fact, why did the levee breach? Yes, we've gotten a lot of water, more than than we should have. Well, I guess it depends on who you ask, but it's a lot of water. We have to find a way where we can make sure that the Pajaro River levees are well-working rivers. A lot of times we spend so much money on different reports, oh, let's investigate this, okay, who's going to clean this, who's going to clean that? Is it the Corps of Engineers? Is it this person, that person? And a lot of times I feel that what happens, it gets lost in the transition of who's going to do what and when it's going to be done. And the federal government doesn't want to give any money to fix our waterways. The state doesn't want to do the same thing because they have other interests. But I think it's to the point where we should stop and just really think about these communities. We call them underserved communities. And I used to have a problem with that, you know, calling them underserved communities just because probably they're Hispanic, so they don't have a lot of services that these other places have. And because of that, because they're not constantly out there, you know, oh, we need to get this, now we need to get that. And they're voicing their opinion, reference to what the needs are for our community, a lot of things don't get done. And I think it's time to find whoever's going to be responsible for taking care of our waterways. Right now, we have Santa Cruz County that takes care of the Santa Cruz County side. Our county takes care of our side, and somewhere in the middle, something happens where we don't get the same level of service in our side versus their side, or we might do more than they do. But I think if we have somebody that's in charge of making sure those levees are up to par where they need to be, that will alleviate a lot of these problems. And this is, people are living in tents. It's not a good situation to be in. And I would also like for whoever's in charge that determines, you know, what type of work gets done out there or maintenance gets done out there, I would like for us to put it on the agenda. And let's bring the professionals in from the county level, from the state level. Let's bring them in and let them explain to us what could be done differently. And I think that's the only way we're going to fix this problem because it's twenty, thirty years down the road, is it going to happen again? I don't know, you know, I can't see that for a bad five years. But we have to do something to where we take care of this problem. We have these, from what I understand, you know, like if you look at the Southern California, it's like the LA River, what have you, you know, you have cement on the sides.
The whole thing.
The whole thing, it's cemented end, right? And I understand that we want to protect, we want to protect some of our species that are out there, what have you, that are endangered species or whatever, but I tell you what, these rivers come, they leave absolutely nothing. I mean, so we have to balance it out. What do we need to do to make it better? And that's all I have to say about that. I probably went overboard with it, but I'm just so frustrated. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mendoza. And thinking of what you just said, I'm perhaps suggesting an item that could come back as a presentation to the planning commission since we do have, you know, permitting responsibility and many of those locations are along the Salinas River and rivers like the Pajaro. I'm wondering if we could have a presentation that includes the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the Army Corps of Engineers and maybe the Water Resources Agencies, both for the Pajaro area and for Monterey County, just to let us know, you know, what is the proper process and work that either can be done or cannot be done in regards to that, those river channels? I know there's a huge Arundo problem that on the flip side, when we don't have water and when we don't have rain, is absorbing the water that's in those channels, but it also is an issue of debris in the channels and all the things that lead up to flooding. You know, what is, what is the proper avenue for clearing the waterways? In a way, of course, their main priority is the protection of the species. We are unique in Monterey County and Santa Cruz County, I think, to versus places like Los Angeles County. But we also have to do that forward-thinking work that it would be great as a planning commission to understand what do public and private landowners have the opportunity to do and perhaps what are the obstacles?
Thank you, Commissioner Daniels. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I don't think it's coincidental that everybody has something to say on this, and I'm going to bring it back to the planning department and the planning commission. I remember being extremely vocal as a planning commission that when we passed the twenty ten general plan, one of the first things we were to do was to study community areas of which Pajaro and Chular also are identified for infrastructure, actually, start a community plan for them so that we could overall holistically evaluate the infrastructure necessary for these communities to become places of healthy growth. Because we wanted to direct the county's growth to community areas and serve it with appropriate infrastructure. When we went through that process, I know I was kind of shrill about it, but I asked and was assured that Pajaro and Chular would be the number one first priority communities to be considered for their community plans. Now, it doesn't sound like I'm talking about flooding, but I am. I'm talking about all the infrastructure that goes into making a healthy community that's ready to accept the kind of growth that is obviously already occurring without this. I would like the planning commission to hear how we're going to move those community plans forward. I've been asking that, it's a referral, I've been saying it, up one side, down the other, it never makes the list. And now we're seeing exactly what we feared. And those, you know, obviously, we recently discussed that area with an application that came before us. And we had to talk about it one off, like it was the only application, like there wasn't anything else going on. Like, you know, we could save this one development by making some kind of accommodation for potential flooding, which might or might not be as bad as they think. And yet, we had a system, we adopted a plan, we said we were going to do this. We referred it and we could never get the priority on that. So I would like to ask that to kind of fold into our responsibility as a planning commission with respect to land use. That might be the avenue, is just to ask that we put the Pajaro Community Plan on our agenda and outline what that would consist of so that we can begin to do a part. I mean, obviously, we can walk and chew gum at the same time. I'm not going to be the person that's going to be out there clearing the debris or checking for gopher holes. But I could be the person that would help us come up with a framework to allow the people of Pajaro to decide how they want to develop. And that would identify all of the infrastructure needs that are so clear right now. And we have to have toilets there. Why do we have to have portable toilets there? Because the sewer system is not robust enough to accept this kind of an impact. All of that would be something that would be addressed by a community plan. That process, as we've seen, can be painful, but it always involves the people who are there. And that would, to my mind, initiating that be at least an appropriate place for the planning commission to try to help. And I think besides, you know, providing whatever donations we can in terms of in-kind or in terms of money or in terms of volunteer work, it's important to look at ourselves and say, where do we have an opportunity to help in a meaningful manner? And I know it sounds like a big, I told you so, it isn't meant to be that. It's meant to be a call to arms to really, let's look at these community plans. And the two that were supposed to be number one were Pajaro and Chular. And, you know, as we've heard, Commissioner Mendoza identified, identified as underserved communities for a reason. They're underserved. It's not about who lives there, it's about what they get, and they're underserved. So two things, one of them is that, and the other one is in praise of neighbors. As we go through these hearings, we often find neighbors that are in disagreement about what kind of development should occur. And I just, I would have been a lot later this morning if my neighbors who were eating breakfast and saw me go by looking at the rocks in the road in the commuter vehicle in my town clothes had left their breakfast, come running out and cleared the road for me. And that's because I know my neighbors, my neighbors know me, they know where I'm going, they were able to come and help. And when we go through a contentious process or a process where people are in crisis, neighbors are going to be one of our resources if we can help that happen. And when we have an application where neighbors are at odds, I want us to help if we can, remind people that your neighbors are your emergency resources and that we should be fostering that understanding all the way along. And it's no good to get the swimming pool you wanted if your neighbors hate you, you're not going to be happy. So with those two rants, I know, like Commissioner Mendoza, when you feel strongly about something, you talk too much, and I often do that. But in this case, I want us to have a referral. And I'd like it in the, in all the things that Commissioner Daniels and Commissioner Mendoza have talked about in the context of, let's get that community planning process going. Let's start looking at it now. Let's not say, oh, we're in crisis, we can't do it until afterwards. Let's start now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other commissioner comments? Will be on then. Referral items.
We've added one to our list. And we will be working on reporting back out on that. I think some of them build on others. So we'll be evaluating ways in which we can tackle bigger picture items which may hit on some parts of other referral items, but we don't have any updates today. Except we are, you do have something on here. For agenda, decide the agenda for environmental justice elements, updates, really, housing. So triggered by. But we're continuing to program and respond to lists. And we will bring something forward. A lot more too on some of these referrals.
Great, thank you. All right, then, consent calendar, but we only have one item on the consent calendar, no minutes, correct? Okay, so then we'll hear the consent calendar, but we're going to hear it, right? The County Monterey General Plan Environmental Development. Prefer, I'd like to pull it if we're not going to hear it. But thank you. So we'll remove it from the consent calendar. And we'll just move on and hear it now. Referral two two zero zero two one.
We do have staff.
Are we going to hear anything? Mr. Spencer, did you?
We do have staff which work on the site up here. If you want a presentation or an explanation, we can give one. Otherwise, if there's questions.
So we'll take questions, yes?
Thank you. One question I have is I'm unclear about the color coding on this. If you could just explain that. And then in light of the conversation we just had, wondering if there's any other other community organizations in the Pajaro area that have been particularly active and I guess, in other words, relied upon, that would have this whole experience fresh in their mind and be invited to participate.
Thank you. So the first question addressing the color coding, the highlighted yellow and the green are who, the twenty organizations that were contacted of the ninety, the original ninety?
Okay, and then if they have accepted, they're just, they're only the ones that say accepted, nothing to do with color.
Correct.
Okay. And is there any, I mean, I know that there have been, perhaps unfairly, a lot of organizations are carrying the burden of community services right now. I'm just wondering if there's any that we could extend an invitation to, maybe just something to think about. And if they're not exactly, I mean, actually, now that I think about it, they might actually be based in Watsonville, but the population that they're serving is the Pajaro community that's in Monterey County. So I don't know how that works, but it might be interesting to get their perspective.
Yes, that is something we, when we have called the twenty organizations and they've either accepted or declined, some have declined because of the fact that so much is happening and they just don't have any more time to. They don't have discretionary time to, you know, serve specifically. Because they're, they're just really dealing with
so much.
Yeah, their situations. If, if there are, staff is completely open to opening the, up for more organizations, if folks know of any in particular that are not on the list. Yeah, we just tried to pull in as many as we could, but then also understanding that the the E J C A needs to represent all of the communities that are identified as disadvantaged. And we wanted to make sure that representation is across all the county as well. And as far as North County goes, there are, there is one organization on there, I believe they've accepted, but it's a North Monterey County community-based organization, not particularly Pajaro, but I'm certain that Pajaro would be included as far as being represented.
And one last question through the chair, is there a way to possibly make it easier for groups that are overwhelmed right now to participate, maybe just in the form of the survey versus having to come to meetings?
Well, there is a survey out, and so every member of the public is welcome to participate in the survey. The meeting because of the format of the organizations in particular because these organizations are expected to speak for their communities. So we ask for one participant from the organization to come and give a broad representation of their community. So as far as the survey, certainly, everybody is welcome to participate in that. And then we have community meetings. And then as far as the community-based organizations go, this is that particular forum for them. So, and it's not very many meetings, it's really only three meetings. And then requesting that they review drafts of the environmental justice plan is chapters of the drafts as they come through.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, I think the, if I understand the comment, we want to make sure that there is representation. I have been somewhat involved in the emergency talks with Pajaro. There are dozens of nonprofit organizations helping within that community. Some of them have accepted our list.
Oh, great.
But they would be often serving the entire county or even the entire Amback region, Santa Cruz, Monterey, San Juanito, Penas. Specifically to Pajaro, I think that I have some ideas that are community leaders within that community. Rosa and Assumptions Church, that might be worth exploring and adding to our list. And we can certainly.
Excellent, thank you. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. I want to thank Commissioner Daniels for allowing, you know, pulling us so we could have a chance to talk about it and suggest that this, in fact, isn't the kind of item I was expecting to see on the consent calendar, just so going forward. Because it is so large, global, and important to what we do going forward. It's kind of a little ironic that the people who are doing all the work are the ones that don't have time to participate because those are the ones we most would want to talk to. So I have two things, one of them, I'm thinking of working in some sort of post-event evaluation of how justice was served in the response to the current emergencies, might be illuminating. And secondly, on a different note, when you look at the roles and expectations, I would like to add an expectation of a discussion of how this is going to be implemented going forward so that the people there might be able to help. So that the people there might be able to help us. I'm thinking of something, it's, it's more important even than the Historical Resources Review Board. Something that helps us in ongoing review of various kinds of applications. So that we were able to get that input in an ongoing fashion. And this group might be able to help us create that mechanism for implementation as part of this discussion. So I'd strongly suggest that we put an implementation outcome into our, our meeting expectations. I don't want it to, I don't want to lose this opportunity in a single, we're gonna talk about the big 50,000 foot picture and then we're all gonna go home. I, I think it would be really helpful to develop like the Castroville Community Advisory Council or something that would help us carry this notion into our, our everyday project review. Get the benefit of all these people's perspectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Deal. Any other comments, questions? So we'll leave it from here then. We're gonna get more invitees added to the list. And that'll come back to us again.
Well. Can Jamie remind us what the action requested today was?
Well, if so with the environmental justice, community advisory committee, we're, we reached out and we're still receiving acceptances or declines. And we can certainly add more names to the list. It might be more efficient timewise to add names, if there are names to add. So Mr. Spencer suggested one and then perhaps approve the list with the added names to consider and, and reach out to.
And add the expectation.
And add the expectation, yes, yes.
I think the way it's written in your report is to establish this committee to review the list. Highlight of the, of the community organization. We've identified two more at this point to reach out to. We can identify more. But I think that it's not, it's not a request to appoint people to that committee specifically.
It was, I mean, that's how I read it anyway.
It's, it's to appoint no more than 20 as people accept. Because we're not, we're not sure that we're going to be getting 20. So far, we have eight, I think, six or eight organizations that have agreed. And at some point, those that have accepted, we, we need to sort of capitalize on their ability to participate in a timely fashion.
What is the, what's the start date for the committee? Because the deadline for accepting was March 8th.
Right.
I just don't remember seeing a start date or a date of the first meeting.
So that would be determined by the committee once the committee is formed. So they would once we hear from the commission, you know, that the people who are being asked and being invited is acceptable. You know, there's not much we can do as far as whether or not they accept, but we can certainly reach out to the people that are recommended.
Is there, you said it's capped at 20, is there a minimum number?
There's no minimum.
So we could potentially set up, set up, establish the committee, appoint the eight that we have and give the committee authority to appoint more members as they become available?
Well, it's the way it's set up, because there are so few meetings, it would be probably more prudent to establish when we have decided, when the commission has decided, okay, you know, now go with this committee.
Commissioner Deal?
I guess I'm, I'm getting more muddled. Is, is this a Brown Act committee?
It is not a Brown Act committee. This is, so this is in developing the environmental justice element, the state requires community outreach and involvement in specifically with the communities that are disadvantaged, identified as disadvantaged. And so those communities, this is part of that. There will be community meetings, but this also is a way to engage people from the community to address specific environmental justice issues in the community.
So is this intended to be closed-door meetings or are people gonna be allowed to attend them?
And people will be allowed to.
And we will be letting people know when they're happening so that they could if they wished.
Correct.
There'll be an opportunity for their input. And so when this committee is, how will this committee know that its work is done? Are they going to, are they going to vote on something? Are they gonna make a recommendation that is carried by a majority? What are they gonna do? What's the function of them in terms of their immediate output?
So they bring back hopefully bring back their experiences and the experiences of their community to the table regarding environmental justice issues particular to their community.
Right, so then we have a bunch of issues on the table. What are these people supposed to, I mean, to whom do they report? What does a report look like? And who determines what's gonna go in that report? Is that a staff determination? Does the committee vote on it? What are the committee operational parameters? Are we gonna direct, elect a chair in that group who's been gonna run anything? Or is it just gonna be a conversation where staff brings forward issues that are raised and from the group without any particular weight on them, except the group talked about the story and they talked about this story and we think this is important?
Oh, I know any.
Here, but not here.
Apologize, I'm not able to be there in person today. So yeah, so I've been working with Jamie and with our consultant team on this. And I think some important, some important just points that I want to make. One, this advisory committee, it's just that, it's an advisory committee. And it's, it's multi-fold. It's intended to help ensure that we, that we, the county are truly reaching out and hearing from the community and incorporating what we're hearing from the community. So at, so at one level, what's very critical about this group and even just, and I will say even the process of identifying all of the organizations that we wanted to consider for inviting is that it helps inform staff to make sure that we are doing outreach and we are augmenting our outreach. And we are helping to get, for example, our surveys so that we are directly hearing from the community members. So, so I think that that is one piece that's really critical is that the advisory committee is in part identified to help us do that, but it's not the only way in which we're reaching out to the communities and we're working in the communities. And, and so a lot of, number of the organizations, even if they're not able and weren't interested in formally participating in the advisory committee, we still will involve them in communication and reach out to them to help work through them and their networks to make sure that we're hearing from the community members directly. The other piece is looking to get exactly that sort of advisory eyes with a range of different perspectives on both how we do the outreach and then also how we've heard and incorporated information into the document itself. Right, to help us catch if we have blind spots, to catch if we need to bolster things up or if we misunderstand what we are hearing from the community members. And so that is another important function that we want their eyes to help catch and make sure that we're really representing a broad swath of our community and those individuals who are most underserved and underrepresented. So it's, it's it was not envisioned. And I, and I think there's different ways that the, the committee itself, it is advisory. It wasn't envisioned per se that they, we would necessarily get votes and formal recommendations to the commission on, on reviewing. It doesn't mean that we can't, and I think as, and I think that where we're open to is being, is also looking to what the, these organizations themselves recommend. How do they recommend that we help bring this forward? So I just put that out there. And any advisory committee, there really is, to have it be functional, there really does need to be kind of some bounds on, on how many individuals are represented there. But we are not looking individually for all of these people only on behalf of their communities or on behalf of the constituencies that they work with on. But that they also help us make sure that we are effectively augmenting and getting out into those communities to hear directly from them. So I think I'll just leave it with that. I think I, the, in terms of the structure and, and kind of the roles, I would say that we want to get the, we do want to get the committee established. But it's, it is also really challenging for these small organizations to participate in organized formal manners, which is, I think, part of what we're seeing. And so I think that that goes back to, we really view it as it is on us as staff to make sure that we are engaging and we're coming and meeting these communities and meeting these community organizations in ways that make sense so that we're getting that feedback in, even if it's not through the formal advisory committee capacity. And we can certainly also share some of our thoughts similar to the successes that we've had with, for example, the housing element and the survey that we distributed out and ways in which we really got out in the community to boost input and to make sure that we were hearing directly from community members in our understaffed communities. That's the, we're doing a similar kind of on-the-ground amplification to make sure that we're hearing directly from those individuals.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you, Ms. Bredy, as always, that's very helpful, I appreciate it. My concern is that when you ask somebody to do something, you're more likely to get a yes if you tell them what the outcome will be. And if the outcome is, oh, you're gonna have input into a general plan element that will be later developed. It's not real clear. So we also have had cases in the, in the county where, and I don't in any way mean that the staff is doing that now, where advisory committees have been used, for want of a better word, to, to cloak decisions that they were not really able to make openly. In other words, advisory committee is guided into a setting where they only have a few choices. They then say, out of these choices, this is the only choice that we like. It comes back and it's represented as they adopted this choice and support it. So some kind of understanding for these people who are deciding in all the important things they do, how important this is would, would be, would be, I think, attractive. So if you say you're gonna have these three meetings, you're gonna have a chance or whatever it is, we're expected to, you're expected to do these things. At the end of that, we're gonna have an opportunity for you to weigh in and that weight will be recorded and go forward with the element. Or something as clear as some kind of clear recognition that their work isn't just gonna be going into the atmosphere as so many of our committees do. I, for one, given the description that you just had, would be hesitant to commit time to this endeavor. And I think the attraction would, for me, would be if I knew what it was gonna do at the end. And so I, I just offered that as a way to go forward and to say that I don't know that we are appointing committee members insofar as the description to me sounds more like we're selecting focus group members. And that those are gonna be people that are gonna help us understand, but that they're not going to then be tasked with decision-making. If that's not the case, it would be really good to clarify that there's gonna be some, some real input from them that will be physical, that will be real, that will go forward with the process. I don't know if that makes any sense at all, but I'm just thinking about how I choose to commit my time in community endeavors. Given what I've heard about this, I wouldn't put this on my list.
So can I ask a point of clarification then? And I think maybe this is something that hearing from the whole commission, what I'm hearing is actually that you would and I think it's a good point, that you would like this committee to have a, a formal role in that respect. And that you as a planning commission, and I'm not, and I'm asking the planning commission if this, if you concur as a whole, that use the planning commission might want to wait to hear that committee's recommendation accompanying what we bring forward to you by way of draft policies.
I think that, I think that what we're struggling with is, is what the product of the committee will be and how they will influence what ultimately comes part policy. And so we need a clear description about, you know, is this committee acting as a conduit to those who aren't normally participating in community outreach?
Yes.
Or are they, are they going to create some sort of objectives and goals that then become part of the environmental justice element? And will they vote on that? Will that be brought forward as part of the environmental justice element? Which, which, you know, what is it that we expect them to do? And then I think we can get better direction from finding permission.
Commissioner Gonzalez, you had your hand up earlier.
Yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Is this particular environmental justice something based on you, you federal or state loss? Or is it something that's been around for a while?
There, the environmental justice element is an element of the general plan that gets triggered when a jurisdiction is updating two of the general plan elements. So we're updating the housing element and the safety element. And so that triggered the development of environmental justice. We just haven't been at this place before in the county.
More of a statement, but looking at all the information that they're looking at, three meetings seems like to me not enough time to cover all the different aspects of mentioned in the document. So I, I, I don't know if, again, if three meetings will, will be enough. It's my, my, my personal statement. And the other piece is in terms of how are you communicating to all of these individuals? Is it by email invitation, is it by letter? Is it followed up with phone calls?
Yeah, so an email was first sent and then, and then I reached out. You have phone call. And invited, reiterated the invitation to, to join the meeting.
So were you able to contact via phone call the individuals that are in green or only the ones in yellow?
I have both.
And their, their answer was no, they're not interested or?
Some just haven't been able to respond yet. There, there just hasn't been a response yet.
So they, they told you would get back, back to you or what? Because you said you've talked to them by phone.
I, most of them, I left messages for them and tried to get ahold of them directly. Some of them called back directly.
Anyways, thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Yeah, I was wondering if perhaps we could just clarify then the, the motion that, or the recommendation here on the, on the table. And perhaps instead of establishing an advisory committee, we're establishing three or more environmental justice community meetings in order to, and that's where we have a very clear X, Y, and Z. In order to, and that's where we have a very clear X, Y, and Z, which if I keep looking, I'm sure we can come up with it. What, what is the purpose? What are we doing here? And then number two is consider the list that you provided. Of community-based wards and groups to ensure widespread participation. Because that's the goal. And number three would be inviting up to 20 members to these environmental justice meetings. I don't think it's necessarily. I think advisory committee is perhaps the wrong word. I mean, we're looking for public input, public participation, public guidance. And, and that, that list could grow. We want as expansive, I think, participation as possible. So if my colleagues have any input, I really think the part that's truly missing is we're establishing. These environmental justice community meetings in order to. Or in preparation for the environmental justice element, but it would be really important to be very clear. And for, for, I think, staff as well, what that goal is, what that vision is, is, is for that participation. In a way that would allow for the folks who say yes, or who are maybe on the fence. To know what sort of impact this participation will have, because it really is critical. That we get their voices and input. I don't know how else we would succeed without it.
If I may, through the chair. Just. Thank you, Commissioner Daniels, for that. And. Just say that there does need to be a way to distinguish between, there are already two public community meetings to be established. And I did hear Commissioner Deal mention something that it sounded more like focus groups, environmental justice focus groups. So I, if we're. You know, talking in terms of how to call the group, what to call the group. Or, I guess. Establishing it more, at more as a group. As opposed to. Just opening up, because then if it's, if it's. We're calling them three community meetings, then we're really having five community meetings. So I just wanted to put that out there and maybe Melanie, if, I don't know if you have any ideas regarding nomenclature?
No, I think, I think it is, I, I do think it's important that we distinguish that we are looking to establish an advisory group. That can as broadly represent. And that we do view that advisory group as different from what we will also be doing in terms of a broad community outreach. We would hope that at community meetings, you know, all of these organizations and/or their membership would be able to participate. And so I do think it's important to distinguish and not convolute sort of the broader community outreach. With the intent of having a focused group that helps give us kind of, that, that helps advise. If we want to look at a different structure, I think some of this. And just tracking back. So there is a, as a part of the environmental justice element and the state law requirement. Jurisdictions are required. This is very specific language to establish an advisory committee. And so. So I will acknowledge some of how we've been pulling this together is also just, you know, out of establishing and meeting that. That state mandate and where we are having challenges in some ways is, one, because these organizations, they are very stretched. And also because we have a very broad, very diverse jurisdiction geographically, demographically. And, and so I actually, I think if I'm building off of. You know, building off of Commissioner Daniels and some of the other comments we've heard. We might be able to take an approach to broaden participation if we perhaps took. Kind of advisory in a geographic context or sort of in a meaningful context where. It's, I'm just, I'm, I'm literally kind of spitballing right now on, on kind of what we're hearing and how we might be able to incorporate that. To kind of boost both the clarity, meaningfulness and possibly participation in it. So that might be one way where it's still advisory, but where we do it in focus areas and, and maybe parts of the county. Where, you know, we're going to focus on North County. And so for those organizations that are North County. You know, that might be a more easier venue for them to come in. And, and provide some advisory capacity. I also did want to kind of go back to something that. That the comment about implementation, and I think that's actually really well received. I, I've been digesting this since you've said it. And I think adding clarity that we, we absolutely would look to this advisory group. To help us ensure that not just that we're reaching the right community. We're incorporating the right goals and the right outcomes that are truly reflective of the communities. That are, you know, that are identified as disadvantaged. And I use that word simply because the state, it's the state definition, but are truly underserved. But I do, I think, also incorporating the importance of what implementation looks like and, and, and having a forward focus. Because I, I think that that's an, is a really, actually is a really important goal that this group can help us focus on and bring forward. Forward through the policy process in terms of prioritizing. And kind of communicating how we formally go forward with this policy and other related policies.
And if I may, through the chair, as Melanie was speaking, part of the objectives that we're looking for. This advisory group to do is to prioritize. Or the areas that would help the community the most. So. Rather than a top-down approach of, you know, we're going to come into your community and tell you what you need. Okay, these are the community's priorities. And so that is one very key objective of having the advisory. You know, and then of course we overlay that on top of the input we're going to get from the community during community meetings, from the survey. As well, and there's, the survey has geographic references as well. So people will be able to identify where they live, as well as. You know, areas that are. That are really underrepresented. So perhaps if it's not just. The environmental nature of where people live, but it's also, you know, are, are they? Do they have some sort of handicap? Seniors, right, who need more help or. Just children, even youth. And, and black and brown youth in particular. Specifically who. Endure. An overburden. And so it's really difficult for us to go into the community and say. You know, well, this is what we see and this is what you need. So this is part of what we need from, from. The representatives on the advisory council, the advisory.
Thank you. Commissioner Daniels, that was your answer. Good. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Okay, so it seems, I really think that the geographic. Collecting people geographically is really important because we know the priorities are different in different parts of the county. We, we know this. So stepping back and, and, and just envisioning for a second, what if we were to have. Open meetings, geographic open meetings, out of which we get each of them comes up with six people that they want to send to the advisory council. To talk about how their priorities are going to fit in with the priorities of the county as a whole. And that that advisory committee or whatever, steering committee or whatever it is that, that we want to condition them past. And I understand that the terminology for the state has to be what it is, but the function can be as it's defined. The, the function of that would be to take the priorities identified by the regional community meetings. And, and I wouldn't have any question that inviting everybody there would be appropriate. You can do priority setting exercises with pretty many people, as we all know from ever so many post-it note sessions. That would allow that advisory committee to be specifically engaged in bringing together the priorities and goals expressed by the regional communities. Into the larger county setting. And that would be hugely valuable, not only for the county, but for us. Because if we have to do that sorting exercise from, from a perspective of not being informed. It's hard enough, but if the people who set those priorities find that their priorities aren't the ones that come out the other end. And there's no link between how that happened, then the, the product is going to be less supportable for those communities. And for, for them to explain why they put their effort into those activities, I guess is what I, and I'm. The reason that I even kind of got, got a little bit, but caught up in this is that it's framed as exclusive to no more than 20. And I, anything that frames it as exclusive is working against the goal. So if we can find a way to say, we're going to pull, we're going to pull in as many of your points of view as we possibly can. From all of the people who are concerned about environmental justice at all, and we'll bring them in regionally. We're going to have some kind of exercise where we can actually take in your input. You can use the surveys. And then all that information comes back and then your three meetings of your advisory council are. Actually, it could be a smaller group at that point. There should be some representation from each of the geographic. And perhaps somebody who's more overall can meet with people who are policy people and talk about where their goals and priorities are expressed in policy and how. Because that's a big different step. You can say, I really think that our youth need more parks. And you can feel strongly about that and have a lot of, you may not have experience about it. Where would more parks come from in the general plan? How would the general plan support that priority for environmental justice? That's more somebody who's had experience with policy, like staff would come forward and say, okay, these are places where that priority could be moved forward. You know, in case you didn't know, there's a provision that some kind of subdivisions are required to do this. So if we have those, we could. But you know, they might, people might not know that on the street a lot of times. Anyway, so trying to look at a way to make it more firm, maybe there's another layer, maybe there's two layers there. Maybe there's some way to use the community meetings as an inclusive setting, get some input. Bring the representatives out of those, because they'll be the people who heard it and could represent their community. And then have those people help us with the policy side. I don't know.
Any other commissioner comments?
I really like that suggestion. I thought that, that would be really efficient to start with the community meetings. And from the people that attend those meetings and engage and participate and can express. Not only their own views, but speak for their communities, those would be great candidates to invite to the advisory committee.
I think in terms of action, because obviously we have to do something here, I would propose that we continue this to our immediately next meeting. Not further than that, so we can help and say, could we come back? I, I assume staff has heard more than they ever cared to hear already, but come back with a synthesis of, of options at that time that were a little. More manageable. We continue it to the next meeting? That would be a motion. I'm looking around and say, is that okay? Yeah, it would be a motion.
I have a second though. We have a motion and a second to continue this item. Not as a consent calendar item.
I think you might want to take a public comment.
Really? Thank you. All right, public comments. No hands up in the hall. Mine, I see no hands up either. They're in agreement with me. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? One absent? So will that, that motion include the, the. Edits, I guess, to the. Recommendation to include Commissioner Deal's suggestion for outcomes.
I think it would, my motion would simply be to take the input that we provided and come back with a recommendation that. Reflects what they think is useful of it.
All of the input.
All of the inputs and everybody.
Never mind the summary. Melanie's hands was up. Do you have any?
No, I think the commissioner just clarified. I was just wanting to make sure that his staff were clear. What I understood is that we heard today from you, we're going to synthesize that, we're going to meet a staff. And, and we'll also pull in our consultant team and then come back at your, continued at, to your next meeting. Presenting a summary of what we hear as well as some alternatives for recommendations for how we could kind of proceed. And I interpret that as not just with an advisory committee, but more broadly. How, how we're structuring proceeding to get that community input in an advisory role for this.
Thank you, Melanie. All right, on then to scheduled matters.
We neglected to do public comment on the commissioner's comments earlier, so I wanted to.
Thank you. All right, scheduled matters, agenda item three, PLN two one zero two zero three.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Zoe Zepplin. I'm the project planner for PLN two one zero two zero three. Staff is requesting that the hearing on this item be continued to a date certain of April 12th of 2023. In order to allow staff time to make this necessary edits to the staff report to include recent updates to the project proposal. The applicant is aware and agreeable to this.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Deal?
So the date is not May 10th, but it is on the report, but April 12th.
He would like to ask for April 12th.
Any other commissioner comments? Public comments?
I'm Mary Ann Shikatansan, the project architect. And first of all, I say thank you that the date was moved up from May to, to April. I do want to shine a light on the issues that we are having in getting, you know, I know all the emergencies that have happened with fires and the floods. And this is a relatively routine remodel on the Carmel Point. Have this, we applied a year and almost two years in July, it will be two years ago. We got a complete letter last February. And in the old days, we would be expected to have a hearing date within 30 days of our complete letter. We are over a year into this process and this is not the only occurrence. This is a typical remodel job on the Carmel Point. All, all the houses are existing, non-conforming, they're all too big and too high. And we are in an archaeologically sensitive area. We know all these issues and we try to bring projects to you that comply, you know, from how we. According to our experience. So I would. Want to just put forward if there's any other way to deal with remodel projects like that in order to accommodate our clients better. It just means that if somebody, we are very patient people, they have three children, they're going to be out of the house and in college by the time I'm done with the house remodel. Because I just think two years, you know, and who knows, you know, how long our condition fulfillment review will take. So I will, I also really request that we please sign our resolution within a few days and get our NOD out so that. Appeal period, if it doesn't drag on, we can get our petitions fulfilled. We lost one building season and I very much hope that we don't lose the summer for, for, for building season. So it's, it's, it's even on normal, you know, they, they don't have a flooded house or a house burnt down, but that. It's to the point where that really has become our hardship, not only for us professionals, but for the people who apply. So thanks for listening. So thanks for listening, and thank you for... I cannot be here unfortunately, I'm out of time, April 12th, so I would have liked to present that to you in person. I will ask a friend to be here on my behalf at that time. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I apologize, that was applicant's, agent speaking on behalf of the applicant, right? Thank you. Now we'll ask public comment. No public comment? Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, my question is just to understand the continuance. So when the applicant's representative was talking, they got the complete letter, not this last month, but a year ago last month, is that what was...
I'm not sure when the completeness letter went out, was reassigned to this project, as the project planner who originally had it is on extended leave, absent due to medical reasons. And I know that this project had an initial study done, so we did go through a full sequoia analysis, but I do know that this project in particular has gone through different planners and through a couple of reviews, and so I understand if it has taken a while, but if the completeness letter was sent out last year, that wouldn't exist.
And then the other question I have is, so is the continuance something that is coming because staff has more work to do, or is it becoming, is it coming forward because the applicant still has work to do?
Staff requested the continuance, not the applicant, so that we could make necessary changes. We saw something on the plans last minute that we had to work with the applicant on, and unfortunately, we weren't able to make those changes in time for the hearing today.
Mr. Spencer?
Yeah, I will take the responsibility for the continuance request. I understand it has taken longer than usual, there's been some staff turnover issues that have impacted this, and that's not unique unfortunately. We're committed to bringing it back as soon as we can. In this particular case, we need, we need a little bit of time to develop the details we need around what is the legal reforming structure, where that has some structural alterations being proposed to it, and it will not be brought in to conform with current regulations. So there are some complications, there's an initial study, and we just needed that extra week or two to make sure that we have the appropriate findings and evidence.
And is April through the chair, 12th, our next meeting, or is there one before that?
I believe that's the next planning commission hearing, that'll be in two weeks.
Okay. Commissioner Deal?
This is kind of piling on to staff, and I don't mean it that way, but I am going to say that with a project that has been complete that long, it seems peculiar that we would have a last-minute discovery of an issue of that sort. So if we could take that information and look at ways to make sure that we get that sort of concern identified at the beginning of the process, so we, because it's not only a delay, it's a last-minute delay, and that's hard to support with that much time going before. So if there could be some lemonade here, perhaps we could use this and other issues of the same sort, where there's a last-minute thing that comes up, to revise our initial review, so that we don't have these things surprising us later in the process. And I know that in the past, we've depended on the experience of planners with these areas to bring those forward. It appears to me, given our current situation, that it's really critical that those become institutionalized instructions rather than reliance on people's own experience, not professionalism, but experience in those particular areas. Because it's the last-minitness that elevates this kind of thing from being, oh, well, we have a problem, you know, we have an administrative problem, to why the heck didn't you catch that on the checklist when you were coming in? And that kind of thing is really hard to, for all of us to support, and it comes back down to the planner, who just got the project, who can't do anything about it. So prevention would be my... And that being said, I'd like to move continuance as requested by staff.
All right, motion and a second to move the continuance. All in favor?
Aye.
Any comments? One absent, commission hearing. Next, agenda item PLN 220043. Okay, so good morning, I'm Kayla Nelson, project planner for planning file number PLN 220043, for the local residents, which is item number four on today's agenda. The project is located at 2 Wild War Run in Carmel with the Santa Lucia Preserve Petrao subdivision, which is guided by the Carmel Valley Master Plan. Zoning for this parcel is rural grazing with a maximum growth density of one unit for 10 acres, with design control, site plan review, and residential allocation zoning district overlay. The proposed project is a combined development permit consisting of an administrative permit and design approval to allow the construction of a one-story single-family dwelling with an attached one-car garage, as shown here in the upper center of the site plan, as well as a detached garage with attached workshop to the right of the main residence, and detached non-habitable accessory structure on the bottom left of the site plan. Driveway access for the site is in the upper right corner and ends between the main residence and detached workshop. The connection you see to the detached structure at the bottom is, of the site plan, is a walkway. The project also proposes covered porches and associated site improvements. Grading consists of approximately 512 cubic yards of cut and 530 cubic yards of fill, and a use permit to allow removal of two landmark coast live oak trees. On this slide, oak tree canopy is depicted by the gray areas. As proposed, the applicant has complied with all setback height and building site coverage requirements pursuant to the Monterey County Code. Slide four shows the proposed elevations of the main residence on the left, which, with the detached garage workshop and detached non-habitable accessory structure on the right. As described in the previous slide, a single-family dwelling with detached accessory structures are situated amongst existing mature coast live oak trees on the property and are subordinate to the natural features of the area. Staking and flagging were not visible when driving in their direction along Carmel Valley Exterior colors and materials of the main residence include light gray and cream stucco siding, natural wood trim and eaves, black metal-framed windows and doors with accents of light gray limestone veneer. The roof is dark bronze, see metal with mounted solar panels over flat areas of the roof. All detached accessory structures will be designed to match the main residence, and landscape lighting fixtures consist of a metal nickel-plated downlit pillar and round-mounted pack lights, which comply with the Monterey County Lighting Ordinance. Exterior lighting for the main residence and accessory structures have been made a condition of approval for the project. Associated site improvements include stabilized granite walkways with seated gravel concrete driveway and retaining walls. As proposed, the exterior finishes blend with the natural surrounding environment and are consistent with the surrounding residential neighborhood character. The project proposes removal of two landmark oak trees, as depicted in the red circles on this slide. These are, these trees are located within the footprint of the proposed development and due to poor health will be impacted by construction. The project requires an addendum to the Santa Lucia Preserve Environmental Impact Report because tree removal exceeds what was approved for this parcel. An arborist report was prepared for the project with recommended replacement of 10 oak trees. As proposed, the project is consistent with all tree removal conditions pursuant to the Santa Lucia Preserve subdivision and is the minimal amount required for development. The project site is also located within a very high pressure, therefore, the proposed structures will be built with fire-resistant materials, require building code standards, and the project had, also includes visual management plans to ensure safety of the proposed structures. Slide seven shows a snapshot of the updated tree removal chart as of March 2023, which includes this project. 195 trees were contemplated for removal in subdivision-based heat. With the inclusion of this project, 193 trees have been approved for removal, which is approximately 34.4% of the overall subdivision. Upon review of this information and site visit, staff finds the proposed project is appropriately cited and fits the criteria of allowed use. Staff recommends the planning commission consider an addendum to the previously certified environmental impact report for the Santa Lucia Preserve subdivision pursuant to the sequel guidelines, and approve the combined development permit based on proven evidence and evidence. This concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for questions. Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Deal?
Thanks. Good presentation, congratulations on the tree counting, it's very complicated. Believe easier to do on each application rather than overall afterwards, as we all know. Couple of comments, one of them is that the lighting condition should read, if it's the standard condition, and I'm not looking at it for this application, that the outcome is that the glare will be fully contained on site, not that the fixtures are approved to do that, but yes, you've got to get the right things, but when they go in, they still have to actually have that outcome. So let's be really clear that we don't approve lighting fixtures on design, we are pleased to see the design, and if they subsequently somehow or other through some fluke are visible, we're going to come back and say they're not in compliance. So just because conditions are so important, the conditions are clear to the applicant as well as the county, so we know when people have succeeded. I just want to say that because I know it doesn't come up a lot, but that's important to me. I also want to note that my whole exhibit E is marked confidential, and I find that a little difficult, and a county document says confidential in the upper right-hand corner, which of course isn't, but I just want to be clear about this, and it also contains a description of the property that conflates French broom, which I think actually is Janista, and coyote bush, which is a native. So we have an invasive species and native chaparral discussed as if they are, you know, as an existing condition in a manner that might conflate them, they are not the same. And one of them, we are interested in protecting that ecosystem, and one of them, protecting that ecosystem would mean pulling out all the Janista. So just kind of keeping the environmental setting in mind with respect to projected fire clearance activities, because if we're removing invasive species, I don't think anybody's going to have any trouble with anybody who does that at all, for any reason. If we're removing native chaparral, on the other hand, it does become important for us to help people, particularly those who are not from around here, possibly not this applicant, to tell them that there are values of chaparral that are important, as well as fire. I mean, it's not the only, only thing we have to watch here. So just a couple of comments there, and also I just want to say thank you for the tree work. I just am so happy to see that be done as we go along and not have to play catch-up again, so thanks a lot.
Commissioner Daniels?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure I understood this correctly, that in this subdivision, 17 of 29 lots have been built, and so there are 12 homes left that could be potentially built in this subdivision.
Yes, I actually, I had a exhibit.
That might be the F, maybe? The reason I want to just, I want to clarify that that means that in terms of tree removal, potentially in those 12, there is room for 102 trees still to be removed, and, but how does that compare to the rest of the total in the whole subdivision? I've just, I mean, it seems like with Petrero, this particular subdivision, minimal trees have been removed in the development of the 17 homes that have already been built. Is that consistent with the subdivision as a whole, with the entire, not the subdivision, but the entire Santa Lucia Preserve, or the, all of it? And is that a consistent trend? Or are there other subdivisions within the total development that have perhaps exceeded the number of trees that were identified to be removed, could be potentially removed to accommodate for the houses?
Good to share, I hope I'm understanding your question correctly. So there are different phases within the Santa Lucia Preserve, and each, I know phase A through C were analyzed together, and they have a lot of tree removal amount, and we monitor those trees, a lot of trees, and the amount of proposed tree removal. And then we also have phase D, its own subdivision, and then phase E, which we're looking at today, and the numbers in front of you are still staying consistent within the tree removal.
I think, I think there's, it's a little bit complicated, I think Commissioner Deal knows, there, there were different things that are the limiting factors for trees, depending on which phase of the subdivision you're in. I believe phase E was actually a separate subdivision of a remainder lot of what was the subdivision to begin with in the earlier phases. So it was permitted differently, and it actually had a use permit, and permitted a certain number of trees that went with that approval. That's used for all the other phases. Most of the other phases are limited in the sense that the environmental impact report prepared for the subdivision had certain assumptions of the numbers of trees that would be impacted for the subdivision. And at some point in time, there's potential reevaluation of what the environmental determination was for those phases, but for phase E, separate approvals, and a very specific use permit for the removal of trees, we are doing well in that phase, and we are tracking those numbers. And so, you know, we don't know what will happen with the remaining lots to be developed, and we're not at a point in that phase where we're beginning to be concerned about the need to do some formalistic revision in order to...
That's certainly how it reads for this one, so I was, that's clear, and I'll just wait here for my next.
Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. Yeah, and I just, in Petrero, which is different, there are also, there are approvals for the environmental review identified an overall number of trees that were anticipated to be removed. There are also lot, specific lots, where the building envelopes were laid out that have allowances per lot. In this case, it appears to me we are well within the overall, we are over the lot count. And so it is possible, in my mind, that we could get, the reason we've been pushing the tree count all along is it's easy at the beginning, you get to the end, and somebody comes up that needs to remove extra trees, and there's not any more in the count, and that's a big deal. And so, just to be clear, this is two more trees for this lot than we anticipated, it's still well within the larger number, and that was a long time ago. I'm personally, and this is just my own comment, aware that the conditions of trees change over time.
Which is why we're here, though, is because of the two extra trees.
Yes.
Any other commissioner comments? Does the applicant want to make a comment?
Good morning, my name is Craig Holden, representing the Willows Keys, I'm the architect. Thank you, Ms. Nelson, that was a good presentation. The two have languished for a little while here in the planning department, but since she came on board, things have worked very, very well, she's extremely responsive, and we're delighted that she... The two have languished for a little while here in the planning department, but since she came on board, things have worked very, very well. She's extremely responsive and we're delighted that she's a late arriving member of our team. So thank you for the presentation. I won't talk much about the house because it seems like the trees are the real issue. I think one of the things that's actually relevant to your observation, Commissioner, is this particular portion of the preserve has an interesting tree grow up. There, they tend to be large mature trees broadly spaced. There are other portions of the preserve where you have lots of sort of thicketio, scoring that six, eight, ten, twelve inch category. In fact, our arborist, Justin Otis, here today, he can also speak to this with greater precision than I I am. But this is, this whole area at the at the bottom of the preserve actually has almost, not almost all, but probably seventy percent of our trees are landmark trees. And there are fresh ones coming up, but they're just big broad trees. Most of them are over thirty-six inches in diameter. It's an interesting spot and very different from what you see in other parts of the preserve. I think the the biggest point I'd like to make is that the two trees we were proposing to take out, the eighty-four inch, which is enormous, and the forty-eight inch. The only one we actually designed to have to take out was the eighty-four inch. The forty-eight inch tree we designed, it stands outside the limits. We we are okay with the root zone. The only reason it's proposed to take out is because upon the arborist analysis, it's it's a very unhealthy tree and it's a hazard tree. And so even though you can see on the site plan, I don't have it up. But you can see that tree actually could stay. We don't need to take it out. It's just because it's really not a very good candidate. It has some proximity to the garage and so it's directly take out. The eighty-four inch tree is, of course, that was, it's an old sort of eroded tree that's sort of in the last stages of aggression, and it's extremely open at the whole, the bottom twelve feet of it. It's about, I don't know, maybe a twenty-five foot tall tree. It's very hulky, but it's it's and I've got pictures here to show you. It's just, it's completely gone. It's shot. And it too is a hazard tree. So that was the only tree we intended to take out in this frame because of that. So the overt visual distress is under, and and because it is completely hollowed out. So again, these trees were not in any way sort of willing, no, oh, let's just put the house here and get rid of a couple of trees. We analyzed the situation. I've got the photographs here. Would I be allowed to approach? Should she pass around the photographs? Showing sort of the extent of the of the rot and and erosion on that. This is that tree. You sort of see into all the way out, you actually see the tree higher up. So yeah, just trying to be real specific that we don't want to whack down a seven foot diameter tree under any circumstances, but that tree is in fact that's character. I have additional photos too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions? Other comment? No public comment? Commissioners?
I I would only make one comment and say that I seldom heard a tree that somebody wishes to be removed come up healthy. It's just unusual, but it is almost invariably determined. But that in mind, and given all the previous conversation about the allowances here and the conditions of trees, I'd like to move staff's recommendation in this matter.
Thank you. I'd be happy to second. Unless you would, Chairman. We have first and a second. To move the recommendation of staff, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Was there?
Public comment?
You did, she did. She just went through. What, what he was asking for was potentially to take back a public comment on the commissioner comments from this morning regarding the Pahrul item. I meant not on the item that we had discussed with the Department of Justice. So perhaps we
We have to take public comments on opening comments of the commission for items not on the agenda.
I, I don't know that we often do that.
Never done it.
I mean, it's like taking public comments on public comments.
I'm old, I'm confused.
All right, we can, let's, let's, let's be safe. Let's be safe, but let's, let's confirm that because that's on Commissioner Mendoza and Commissioner Daniels and Commissioner Deals opening comments on an item not on the agenda, and the comments were all related to the Pahrul community challenges right now. No public comment from anyone in the room and no hands up? Any written? We have no written correspondence. Okay.
All right.
Wait, wait, no, department report.
If you're right, there's a lot going on. So yesterday, the board did take up an eviction moratorium for residents of the county. There, I think, going back to some of the discussion from earlier today, what we have learned in some of our exercises working with the services offices is that Pahrul tends to be, according to the census data, about twenty-six percent owner occupied. So there's a lot of folks renting. It makes for an interesting situation when you return to a flood damaged home, and you are not the owner of the building, but you're the owner of the contents of that building. And working with landlords on rent payments and any necessary physical upgrades that need to be done for flooring, walls, or anything of that sort. So I think that there is in motion some additional things to try and assist people in those sorts of situations, but at the moment, similar to what happened with COVID. Or, or, or did take that action to temporarily limit evictions. They also brought up potential to consider an interim ordinance prohibiting the issuance of for rental permits. Some of the discussion was, or questions had to do with where or the scope of that interim ordinance. And there's been some discussions that it's supposed to come back to the board, so nothing's in place at this time. We are continuing to process applications for short term rentals until or unless the board adopts an interim ordinance that has at least have the consideration of approving permits for that. Let's see. September Ranch, the board has approved the subsegment and land use designation changes that were recommended by the commission that we're implementing, condition of approval that really just identifies open space around the residential lots. And they also considered an amendment to the subdivision yesterday that changed some of the conditions that prohibited the water system on September Ranch from connecting to the Calam water system. That one of the reasons given for that was that the September Ranch water system could not get the necessary permissions from the state water board to have operate their own independent water system with water treatment because there's a desire to consolidate systems that are in Calam service territory. They now have to connect to Calam, provide the water to Calam for treatment in the Calam system, metering it out and metering it back when they receive it as a water system distributed to their other part of that is that they amended traffic and circulation conditions so that a stoplight is no longer required at the intersection of Carmel Valley Road. Quick down. And instead, they would be allowed to do a center lane generalization, turn, center turn lane and generalization that would help people making left and right turns off Carmel Valley Road into the subdivisions without having to put in a stoplight, and that was part of a recommendation supported by Carmel Valley Road Committee and others. So that just required some amendments to various conditions of the subdivision and subdivision agreements. Well. And we're also, I think we've blurred together some weeks here, but I think that we had reported previously of the opportunity for some loan for housing on County property of World Drive. It's Venus.
About the, Commissioner, but the the September Ranch one with the water and the channelization, what items come before us and what don't? I just wasn't familiar with that one, and I was just curious why it goes straight to the board.
Yeah. I, I, it's unclear in our code what what through the appropriate authority is to amend conditions for a subdivision that has been approved by sometimes multiple, you know, could be approved by the planning commission, go to the board on appeal and be approved by the board. When it comes to subdivision improvement agreements and things like that, I think those just seem cleaner to have the board act on that. On that amendment to that permit because the board did ultimately approve that subdivision. Of the zoning amendment. The, you do, the planning commission has to review, provide recognition to the board on zoning, zoning amendments. So we try to follow the process as closely as we can.
I have one other question about the eviction moratorium that you mentioned that came before the board supervisors. Did they mention at all, or was there a discussion on the state laws that already exist? Like, I I'm curious what makes a building uninhabitable, but I know you can't evict somebody already by law if a building is uninhabitable, and I'm wondering if there was a conversation about, you know, the damages and those protections that are already in place as well.
There, there were some conversations. I'm not wrong for that, but there were some, some non-profit organizations all wanting to help make sure that they're distributing information to the communities who have been affected and there were, there was a desire for more detail about that in a way that's digestible to people who are really affected. So I don't know what answers, but there was this issue.
I have a question on the same subject regarding the moratorium. How does a landlord make repairs to their property without vacating the tenants from the property?
Also don't know the answer to that. I think, I think a lot of what's happened is in certain areas, not the entire problem. Homes had a foot or more water inside them, and so flooring and sheet rock of a certain height of floor as well as any insulation behind them needed to be taken out, but in the three piles in front of their home and let the structure dry out. And all of the contents then of the home, sofas, appliances, all kinds of things like that are also being either salvaged and cleaned if they can, or just put out on the curb. So it, there have been a number of nonprofit agencies helping people with that clean out. And they are, there's apparently a nonprofit agency called Rubicon who does this sort of thing for flood and fire disasters and has a team of people they bring in and helps individual property owners or tenants clean out the house, cut the sheet rock, take out any hardware that may need to be taken out. So
I misspoke. Let me just say really quickly, I meant that they can't charge rents if the place is uninhabitable. That was my question, not that they, I mean, leads to your question. I I'm totally misspoke, but I was curious, you know, if that was discussed, whether or not they, these tenants would be required to pay rent while their properties are uninhabitable if those protections were discussed, but just wanted to be clear, because your question made me realize I misspoke.
Yes, and it was discussed, yeah. I'm not the right person to speak to what the actual law protections are, but I, I think the, the point is letting people know what their, what their rights are so that, you know, those tenants know their rights and their
And have recourse. Commissioner Deal?
Thank you. One is just a question. In September Ranch, did the traffic improvements timing change? The requirement for the traffic improvements to be completed?
I don't think so.
I, I didn't, I didn't, no, I just wondered, because that's a place where I would flag real interest in keeping an eye on timing issues relating to subdivision improvements. We've had some trouble with there in the past. And then the other is just another editorial, which is is entirely predictable and somewhat annoying, but just on a personal level, that after all of the discussions of September Ranch where the conclusion was, in my belief, erroneously supported that they had a separate aquifer and that they would never in any way touch Calam, that there would be a firewall between them forever. When I think it's intuitively and in fact, on the record proof by their hydrologist that it's all the same water, that the, that the conditions that were imposed to enforce this, this situation that wasn't real have fallen over the course of time into reality. Now we know it's the same water. Now we know it's the same system. Now we know it's the same community in the same service area. I'm going to have to use some of the same infrastructure. How long did it take? Twenty-five years, something like that, but reality triumphed in this case. And while it's personally annoying, I I'm happy to have reality represented here because it's all the same water. It was always all the same water. Anybody that said different words, not.
Thank you, Marza.
Mary Israel wanted to add something to that conversation about September Ranch, but she took her hand down. Who was it? Mary Israel?
She would know.
She would know exactly.
It's not important.
Oh, she put her hand down.
Curiosity more than anything.
Right.
Mostly that happens with affordable housing gets moved down in the, in the timing, that traffic too, you need it early so that the instructions.
Anything else?
I think, I think it'd be worth noting, since we've had a couple of comments today, that we, we do have a couple of vacancies and a couple of absences that always are difficult for our department to deal with. But we have actually fairly, we've stabilized our, our
ER.
Our, our planning positions, and so many of them have been here for a year or more now, and we hope that they'll continue to be here for, for longer. We could, we do have one medical absence that we're, we're dealing with as well as Eric Lundquist is unexpectedly out as our director. So I'm temporarily trying to wear two hats and probably feeling miserably.
You only have one head.
And this is the third, you know, switch since I, as soon as I found out it left the emergency center, come back to the office to try and help out Eric. It's okay. I've been talking to him, and we hope we'll be back soon, but But for the time being, we're, we're juggling quite a bit. And we're doing our best to keep the balls in the air, moving as quickly as possible.
Thank you. That's very talented of you. Commissioner Mendoza?
I was just gonna ask, is there any plans for a temporary shelter for some of the residents of Paharo? I know the last time they did put up trailers out, there were, you know, several of them got to live out there while they were repairing some of the rentals. So I don't know if we're aware of any. Joe, private or without you?
I know that the, there's a desire of the county, state to bring in FEMA assistance, which would then provide for some housing assistance programs that would be funded at the federal level. But for reasons I'm not clear on FEMA, FEMA's thresholds for involvement have not been met or haven't been forthcoming as in some other cases. So the state offices of emergency services in California sort of equivalent to FEMA is doing what they can to assist with that. And I know that our office of emergency services is, is working on that as best they can with the resources we have available to us. And I hope that they will find the right solutions. I think that, I don't know that the shelter has been, the shelter lots though that have been many folks has, is, has closed or not. I think it's still a little bit. But I'm not sure of the long-term solutions.
I could just add, wearing my day job hat, that I know that there's a really heavy duty push with the federal and the state offices to get that FEMA acknowledgement of meeting the threshold. And then in the meantime, it was part of a conversation I got to hear yesterday where the state offices were really working hard to strategize ways that either motels or hotels or trailers, these types of opportunities could be engaged. And so I know that's a very active conversation that I just got to observe one of just happening last, after, yesterday afternoon. So.
Full transparency in, I think, coming out of the 1995 Paharo redevelopment agency at the time purchased the property that had been red tagged. I think it was an industrial sort of property on Lewis Road. It's now Kent's Court. They brought in some mobile home units that were intended to be housing for folks who are displaced. Those housing, that, the housing's been occupied for some time. We no longer have redevelopment agency and we do have to figure out what the county is or the property owner in that particular situation that's going to do with that, that property. And I know our housing team has been working on that diligently and we bring, bringing some plans.
Thank you. It's time. Mary, I know you heard the subject of September Ranch and your hand went up.
So to the chair, I wanted to answer Commissioner Deal's questions about the September Ranch development. The owners, one Carmel, did confirm with staff that they plan on doing the offsite improvements, which are those roadway improvements first. And as far as coming back to this body, they have a proposal for signage for the subdivision. And per one of the conditions of approval, that is, that is required to come before the planning commission for review. It's within the Carmel Valley Road corridor and that is at incomplete status right now. They're, they're working on a redesign. I made some suggestions for redesign and for measurements to show a hundred feet back from the Carmel Valley Road. So that'll come before you next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
And we're at the end of the meeting, about to adjourn. We have one hand up. A member of the public would like to make a closing comment.
Thank you. Hi, this is Margie K. And I did send Craig Spencer the 2019 arm, it's like Army Corps of Engineer Plan for the Paharo River Levees. They are the ones who are in charge of, of coming up with a plan. So I did send the document to Craig to forward to you. And if you have interest in it, reading it, it's very, you know, complicated and all that, but you know, at least you have the benefit of knowing. And the Monterey County Water Resource Agency is the flood control for the county. And they also have just hired a new general manager who's going to take the rains next month. I think near the end of next month. So former CAO Lou Baumann and former general manager Brent Bookay have been working on all of this, the, the river, plus all the staff of the Water Resource Agency with the levy repairs and all that. So it, it took years to get a plan in place. There's a lot of reasons and I'm, I'm not going to go into it. I apologize. But I just want to let you know, I did send to Craig, he can forward to you the Army Corps of Engineer Plan for the river. And also the planning, the board of supervisors yesterday approved a new planning commissioner for District Two is from Paharo. So that, that, you'll have some benefit of, of a community member being on your planning commission. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bay. And we will adjourn. Can we adjourn? Okay, adjourn.